Guy came to Dr. King and was like, hold on.
Yeah, I got something.
Oh, yeah, okay. What is that? For a thousand dollars? Oh, thank you. Yeah, okay, appreciate it.
I thought mine was the one you might like.
Yeah, yeah, you know it. I'll probably eat them all tonight.
Whenever you want.
Cool, appreciate it. I want to hear your thoughts.
As long as I'm not getting too polite.
No, not at all.
If you ever want to go to them, then I can.
Okay, cool, cool. Is it January six?
Yeah, because he doesn't, he gets out at eleven thirty.
So I come with like five. Ah, but you know what? Mine be in school, so, yeah.
Can I, can I click it for you?
Did you put this tack on too?
Of course not. Maybe that's why it was.
Korea, look at them.
Yeah. Yes.
No, I don't have some.
Your phone is frozen.
Cheers. Yes, always.
Dress.
Okay, it is six thirty-two. We would like to call our Peoria Public School Open Session Meeting to order. Madam Secretary, would you please call the row for presents?
Mrs. Kostic. Mrs. Murray.
Here.
Mr. Ivory. Mrs. Rose.
Here.
Mrs. Ross. Dr. Wilson.
Here.
President McConnell.
Present.
We have six present.
Thank you so much. Sorry, you guys, I'm getting, um, organized. Uh, may we all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you so much. We would like to, um, acknowledge our boards today. We have Mark Bills. On this side, the flag is hiding some of it. And to the other side, um, Manuel High School. Thank you so much, Manuel and Mark Bills. And I want to personally thank everybody for being here, um, tonight on this cold night. And I know it's a sacrifice. And so we promise not to hold you no longer than necessary. Um, may we have announcements from our board members, starting with Mrs. Mrs. Murray.
Okay, um, congratulations to Michelle Wolf of Charter Oak Primary School and Makara Pittman of Manuel High School for being named to WTVP's 2024 Forty Leaders Under Forty. Your leadership impact at Peoria Public Schools is truly inspiring. Boundary waiver applications are now open at psd150.org slash boundary waiver. Until February third, waivers allow PPS students to apply for attendance at another school within the district.
Quarter two semester one report cards went home last Friday, January tenth. Please review your students' academic progress and set goals for them with this upcoming semester. Attention, high schoolers and guardians. If you haven't completed the FAFSA yet, this is your sign to get started or ask your counselor for help if needed. Filling out the FAFSA as soon as possible is required for anyone seeking financial aid towards college or technical schools. Uh, reach out for your school counselor for more info.
Um, join also on January sixteenth for the first Warrior Way Cafe of two thousand twenty-five. Enjoy sweet and sour chicken, miso soup, and a homemade fortune cookie for dessert. Reserve your spot by noon on January fifteenth at Warrior Way Cafe at psd150.org. Only eight dollars per person. Don't miss it.
Exciting opportunity for fourth through twelfth graders. The Bradley University D A P C E P STEM Program is now open for spring twenty twenty-five registration. This hands-on program offers an incredible lineup of STEM classes designed to inspire and empower young learners. From February first to March first at Bradley University, you can explore classes and register at https backslash backslash D A P C E P dot A S A P connected dot com backslash hashtag course index. Don't miss out on this chance to discover, create, and innovate. Visit the link to see the full list of available classes. Spots fill quickly, so register today. And young authors, the twenty twenty-five Young Authors Contest is underway. Let's encourage and celebrate our young PPS writers. April eleventh, twenty twenty-five, teachers will submit one winner for each primary school and two winners for each K eight school to the district office. And April twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five, district winners will be recognized at the Board of Education meeting.
Thank you. Good evening. Martin Luther King Day, um, on Monday, January twentieth, twenty twenty-five. This is twenty twenty-four on here, but twenty twenty-five, Peoria Public Schools and the offices will be closed in observance of Martin Luther King Junior Day. Uh, let's take this day to reflect on his powerful legacy and equality, legacy of equality, justice, and service to others. How will you honor his dream? And I would add your dreams. Another one. Back to school alert. Beleska Hinton Center and K S K C S S students, get ready. Classes resume tomorrow. We can't wait to see your smiling faces as we kick off a fantastic second semester.
Good evening. Read thirty minutes. In thirty minutes, a world can bloom. Adventures soar beyond your room. Through pages turned, your mind takes flight, exploring wonders day or night. A hero's journey, a mystery's twist, a poet's dream, a scientist's list. Each word a spark, a seed, a key, unlocking doors to what could be. So read each day, let stories stay, to brighten paths along your way. For thirty minutes, take a leap and harvest knowledge you'll always keep. Thank you.
Pardon me, and I have to, a, uh, to, um, to share. Parent Cafe Recap. Parent University took place on Thursday, January ninth, at the Woodruff Career Tech Center, featuring an, an engaging presentation by Gary Moore, who is a retired news, uh, personality. This, um, cafe is called Cray Cray, uh, Parental Advice. The, um, event brought, um, together over one hundred, uh, adults and children, um, supported by high school volunteers, um, our staff, and the Woodruff Culinary Students, who, uh, provided food and childcare. Some of the more engaging, um, discussions were, were, uh, about bullying, fighting, when and how to, uh, address sex education with your children. The next Parent University Block Party is going to be held on Tuesday, April twenty-ninth, at Woodruff, um, Career and Technical Center. And I heard so many positive things about this, um, event last, um, Thursday. I even got a couple of texts that was really nice, so hope to see you guys at the block party.
Thank you to Dr. Coleman for giving the chance to do the project.
Thank you so much, Dr. Coleman. That was a great time. And I just happy to see your sweater. Happy Founder's Day for Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated.
And don't get frustrated, Dr. Coleman. I know you want more and more and more, but it's, you're having an impact with this initiative.
And I just must say this, that January fifteenth is the Founder's Day for Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated, who is our, we are the first and foremost. And they superseded us, united and gave birth in nineteen oh eight, since we were having this moment. Peoria Public School Foundation Breakfast. Thank you to everyone who joined us on the Ninth Annual Foundation Three Sixty-five Breakfast, January ninth, at Woodruff. It was a busy day at, um, Woodruff on the ninth. Your generosity helped the, uh, foundation surpass its goal of, of one hundred thousand dollars. And the donations are still coming in. There, and there is still time to, um, you know, support, so it doesn't stop now. You can do it any time of the year, and you can go to ppsfoundation.org. Get involved. And the speaker, um, that morning was Mr. John Morris. And, you know, John is a very fun personality, and he was very, um, engaging. And I was happy to see the, um, introduction by our own Mr. Derek Boots. It was a great morning. I had to leave early, but I kind of got some video footage from it, and it was very, very nice. So thank you all for, um, supporting our foundation. Yes, there were other board members there, um, Christina Rose and Ms., um, Hargrave Murray. And I think that was it. Greg was scheduled to come, but he was sick. He had, he had the virus. I should probably scoot over. I don't know if he's past his.
I'm past it.
Okay, thank you. But just in case. Um, but yeah, it was a great morning. Of course, yes, um, students did an excellent job with the food, well attended. I believe the, the whole gym was full. There was not a empty seat. Yeah, maybe about two hundred and fifty. Yeah, it was a great, great turnout, so we're super proud, um, of that. That would be all of our, uh, announcements. Now we're going to move to item five, Remarkable Spirit. And we're going to hear from Shannon Marlin and Renata Talaris. Thank you so much.
Good evening. Um, I'm Shannon Marlin. This is Renata Talaris, and we're here to present the Remarkable Spirit Award to Michelle Seifel, our Director of Technology.
I didn't even say words, and people are already applauding Michelle. So that helps a lot. Well, we had a big speech, and we're deciding between the big and the short speech. And when we decided about the short speech, Robin said, yeah, let's go with the short speech, so we can get out of here soon. But anyway, um, there is not like a single department or a single school in this, uh, district that can operate well without Michelle Department or Michelle help, Michelle's help. So, and she's always, uh, willing to, um, cooperate and to help everybody in the district to make like a good transition, a good help with all the departments. And for that, Michelle, I, we, Shannon and I would like to thank you. And also Dr. Karah, including Dr. Karah, because when we present, when we wanted to present this award to you, Dr. Karah's day was like, yes. Should happen years ago, so I'm including Dr. Karah on that. So we would like to present you, uh, with this award. And I'm sure Dr. Karah has some words as well.
Thank you, team. A board, Michelle Seifel, is invaluable to the district. Um, she has a very serious face, but she's all about business. She's accurate. She is fast. She knows, she's a Director of Technology, just for the public. And she's, she's just a rock star, um, in that area. And as, and as the team said, Shannon and Renata, she impacts every one of us. So Michelle, this is definitely long, long, long overdue. Um, you're a valued employee. You've been of the district for how many years?
Fifteen years.
Fifteen years. So she's very loyal, and I just wanted to, the team, everybody, cabinet, wanting to say thank you for your dedication and your passion for making a difference for the children and for the school district. Thank you. We love you and we appreciate you.
Okay, next item is, uh, awards and recognition. Most improved, uh, attendance for December. Dr. Karah.
Thank you so much, President McConnell. Um, this is just a celebration, continuing to celebrate our building principals and leaders um, in the category of most improved attendance for the month of December, and also, um, most improved by decreasing chronic absenteeism. And so we want to increase attendance and decrease chronic absenteeism. And, um, I'll tell you, I would like to, um, encourage all of our principals and their teams, because each school has a team, whether it's an attendance team or chronic absenteeism team, and they work together. I would like to encourage them, each building, to continue to be excited about this initiative and, um, continue to, um, to give attention to, to it. Because we've talked a lot about why it's important. If the kids aren't there, we cannot impact them. And so principals have, and their teams are utilizing a variety of amazing strategies. And I just wanted to say, district-wide, we're seeing the progress improvement, um, across the board so far. So far, their work, we can see the results. And I have a chart, but I don't want to bore you guys with the data. So, um, let's give, let's give those schools a nice round of applause. Really proud of, um, the first, the first school, TreeWin, um, for most improved attendance. Mr. Corey Brown. Mr. Corey, are you here? And if you have any team members, why don't you come up? And he's, he's the newest kid on the block as well. He was with us, he left. And he emailed and said he wanted to come back. And so he's the principal at TreeWin, and they love him there. So thank you for coming back to your home. You have bragging rights. They just gave you that, right? And so, um, and Dr. Coleman works very closely with, uh, so Dr. Coleman, feel free to come up and support him too. But, um, Mr. Brown, what's maybe one or two things that's really working for you in terms of increasing your attendance? Strategies?
Well, the big thing was trying to get our designation up. And one of the big, uh, point-getters is going to be attendance, chronic absenteeism. So we really started tackling that at the beginning of the year. Wanted to make sure that that was a big deal for the entire staff. And we knew that everybody was on board with getting our designation up, because, um, we feel like that we deserve a better designation than what we have. So attendance was our first big hurdle that we tried to tackle.
And I believe based on your weekly updates, I, I, I got your, your, I listened to your, your messages you sent to your parents as well, and I get a hard copy of it. I think you guys are on the right track, so keep plugging away. And I, I must tell the team, the public as well, you, you improved by six percent compared to last year, December. That is very significant. So keep it up, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. Whittier. Whittier is the next school with the most improved attendance for the month of December, um, twenty twenty-four compared to December of twenty twenty-three. So if Whittier's not around, then we will go to W C. Oh, I'm sorry. You got to move quickly, Miss. All right. Congratulations to Ms. P.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Good evening.
Introduce it.
President McConnell and Dr. Karah, members of the board. I have Angela Picarni with me. She is the front face of our building. She's our clerical and one of the major pieces of why our attendance is improving. This summer, we connected a lot, and we talked about our goals and how we're going to get kids excited to come to school. We make it fun. We have a very competitive staff. So we have a grade level competition and an overall school competition weekly. And we connect with kids daily. Our Encore staff connects with our kids daily to get them there. So, yeah, we're, we're here to make school fun and make the kids excited and make Whittier feel like home.
I love it. Thank you. Thank you so much. And then, uh, Mrs. Spiker, you're back again, so that's great. Congratulations. What's working at your building? What are some strategies you maybe want or two?
Um, the, well, one of the main ones is, um, just my staff, like I said last time. And, uh, Ms. Mayor, my secretary, every day, kids come to office, just say hi to her, talk to her. So just building that rapport and that relationship. Our SRO, Officer Skavinsky, getting to know all the students as they come in every day. It's just, everyone just making them, trying to make kids feel welcome and, um, proud and accepted to be at our building.
That's great. Thank you.
Those things I think are just continuing to work.
Relationships, right? That's one of our values as a district. So Mrs. Spiker is the principal at Woodruff Career Technical Center. So thank you so much, Mrs. Spiker. Last category, which is very, very important. And Dr. Corey Molson, you reminded us, a cabinet, um, at this time of the year, we're looking at, and Renata and Shannon research, they'll send a, 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 a list of kids every day. I mean, this is, this is like an art and science, right? So every day, they're sending that information to the buildings to say, hey, these are the kids that you need to watch. You need to talk to them. You need to talk to the families as well, because if they exceed, they shouldn't be between eight and ten right now. Otherwise, they're on that chronic absenteeism train. Because remember, if it's what, eighteen? If they miss eighteen days, then it's, it's not a good mark for us. And, and then those percentages increase quite a bit. So a big thank you to, to Renata and Shannon for feeding that information, daily information to principals every day. Can you guys believe that? And principals are working, they're taking it, they're working with it, and they're having a lot more conversations. And as Mr. Spiker said, um, just making them feel welcome, a sense of belonging. We love you. If you have any issues, we will help you. And, um, that's what that list does as well, and it's very targeted. Um, so, yeah, thank you. So we have, again, Woodruff. Woodruff went down by, you're at fifty-one, I said, I don't know what it was. So Shannon, what, it says fifty-one point five.
They decreased by fifty-one percent.
They've, they, they decreased by fifty-one percent. That is, Mr. Spiker, just wave. I have some gift cards for you, okay? Everybody, actually. Does he have some bragging rights as well?
Always, three months in a row.
And then, uh, C.T. Vivian. Ms. Berger, go ahead. She, she, she decreased by thirty-five percent? For thirty-five point six percent, actually, thirty-six percent. And I know, well, I won't steal their thunder, but you have some graduates and some of their projects, the dissertation was on chronic absentee, which was pretty impressive. You want to add anything quickly?
I know, we're just, we're just forming the relationships, finding the data and talking. The families are on board, and I think that's the key on this too. You just get everybody on board.
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Berger, so much. And then last but not least, Northmore. Mrs. Sack, Principal of Northmore. Sack, our board president, loved that hot chocolate song. I heard about it. I was not there. She wants it recorded, so let's, let's follow up after the holiday.
Yeah, they were wonderful.
Uh, so I have Lisa Nimmers, our clerical, our clerical, and Marie Lindahl are our teacher. And it really has become a team effort. The Encore, um, teachers know all the students in the building, and so they're helping out and making connections. And we're doing lots of incentives. Lisa's constantly answering the phone and, um, making connections with the parents. And it just, uh, it's taking off this year, so.
I, I just do want to make a point too, that, I mean, it really honestly takes a village, especially at eighteen, nineteen West Northmore. It's not only the clerical, the principals, the staff. The biggest thing is, um, really understanding the issues that these parents have going on, the communication, uh, engaging with the parents, finding solutions. I mean, we send our family corps to go pick up students when we find out there's something going on. I think that's a, that's a really big thing, uh, to let them know that we care and, and we're not here, you know, to hurt them, but we're trying to help them. Another thing I'll say for this school year, our truancy officer that we have this year, we have great communication with her. She's awesome.
Nicole Finkerson.
Yeah. Nicole. Nicole, she's awesome. She's in our office every week. We constantly are communicating back and forth and working together.
I said Nicole.
And helping with that.
Nicole Finkerson.
Yes. And, um, I don't know, just, we have, I, the incentives and the awards, we have the Wham! Parade. The kids love to see that coming every week, you know? The teachers get together and they have musical instruments and music blaring, and they come down, and each grade level gets a chance to win for the week. And it's just a huge competition, and it's just, you know, keeping everything positive. Sorry, I took too long.
And Dr. Coleman, should we also give credit to Araway and Beth Kreider, since, uh, Northmore mentioned it, with all of the support that we're getting with the truant officers? So it really does take the entire, um, it's, it's definitely a village and, yeah. So a big thank you to Beth Kreider and her team. They'd gotten some extra money. They hired some additional truant officers, and, um, we were able to collaborate, and they're helping us out a lot as well. So I believe this concludes my presentation, Madam President. Another big, uh, round of applause to the principals. My cell phone note, I have gift cards for TreeWin, um, T.T. and Woodruff.
Tracy will take her there. For all of you principals and your leadership team, we understand if you guys are gonna cut out, because it's late, you got an early morning. So thank you for, um, being here. And I like the idea of a truancy officer, and I hope that every building could have access, um, to that, because it does work. It definitely works to have that one-on-one, um, outreach. Dr., um, Corey Molson for Rockford Cohort Graduates.
I could have the graduates come join me up at the podium. Good evening, President McConnell, Vice President Dr. Wilson, Superintendent Dr. Karah, and members of the board. Thank you for allowing us a few moments to celebrate our first cohort of graduates who have completed the Peoria Public Schools and Rockford Public University's Master's Degree in Urban Education. Not everyone could join us tonight, but, uh, we're going to introduce you to our graduates. Um, but as you'll recall, uh, about a little over two years ago, we came forward and let you know that we had launched this cohort. And, um, it was a special partnership with Rockford Public University, um, designed especially for Peoria Public Schools. Um, they actually started the cohort in Rockford with Rockford Public Schools, oh goodness, probably about nine years ago now. And it's a master's in urban ed. And what, what I've learned from them is that the teachers that came out of those programs were becoming leaders in the district. And at the time, we were saying, you know, we really need to build our pipeline of administrators. And we believe that our teachers make incredible leaders for Peoria Public Schools. So we asked if Rockford would be willing to add the principal certification to this program. They said yes. We got approval from ISB, and here we are. Um, it was actually March three years ago that we started the work, and here we are with our first graduates. So I am really proud to say that they have completed the program and their principal internships. Um, they held a symposium at Rockford University in December, and they each got to present their action research projects, which they did with our students and our schools and our programs, and it was incredible. So we did the symposium again last week for our administrative team, because the research is relevant. And, um, so we're just very proud of their work, and we just wanted to take a moment to, um, introduce them to you. Uh, but before we have them introduce themselves, I've asked Jen Reader to say a few words on behalf of Cohort One.
Good evening. It is an honor to stand here today and reflect on the incredible journey of the first Rockford University Masters in Leadership in Urban Education cohort with Peoria Public Schools. This program has been transformative for all of us. It began. It began in December 2022 in this very building with a shared commitment to leadership and equity in education among us. Over two years, we've grown as professionals, individuals. We've had a lot of studies. Some of us have gotten married, we've had babies, we've sent kids to college. We've grown really close over the last two years. And, you know, we've had to make some sacrifices on family time, social time, but we're excited that we did. We feel ready to lead because of that. We've learned a lot about restorative justice training. We've received a lot of mentorship through our professors, through our administrators, through our principals. And a big focus has been equity among our students and our buildings. We are really passionate about building more inclusive schools. We've learned a lot from each other to hear about their experiences in their own buildings, which has been really, really great. And overall, we feel like we are going to really build our community of Peoria. Not all of us are from Peoria, but this is our home now, and we plan to stick around. So get used to seeing our faces. But to the Peoria Public School District Administration and Board of Education members, thank you. Your support has allowed this to be possible. So thank you very much. We appreciate it.
And so at this time, I'll just ask each of them to come up and introduce themselves and the school that you're at currently.
I may do action research. Just do the topic. Just after action research.
Hi, my name is Atsuko Harz, and I am the orchestra director of Reservoir Gifted Academy and Richwoods High School. This program truly has been transformative. I, before this program, I was an eager teacher, but I didn't know what was waiting for me. And now I'm very determined to make bigger waves and hopefully become administrator here in this district as well. I really grew to love this district and the students that we teach and the families and the community that we are involved with. And I'm really thankful. We've learned so many transformative strategies, as well as ways to improve our community and to make sure that no student gets unrecognized and that we can be there for them. My research topic was fostering a sense of belonging at Reservoir Gifted Academy. This was a continuation of the current Bigs and Little Mentorship Program that they currently have. But we did an investigation and a full-on study as to how much impact mentors can have on their younger peers, from eighth grade to seventh grade mentors to fifth grade mentees. And we came out with extraordinary results. And we actually created an action plan. I gave out an action plan to many of my colleagues. And I'm willing to, I'd be happy to share with the board as well as to how we can implement similar programs throughout the district and continue to lift each other up. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Dr. Brandi Brown. I am a proud assistant principal at the Dr. C.T. Vivian Primary School. The title of my research was Exploring the Root Causes of Chronic Absenteeism of Students with 18 or More Absences. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Sarah Holman. I teach at Glen Oak. And with my partner, we did research on the academic and social impact of exclusionary practice of removing students from the classroom.
My name is Jacob Dupree. I'm a biology, chemistry, and horticulture teacher at Peoria High School. I did a layered curriculum at an urban high school, which looked at both the academic improvement and the engagement with sciences for my students.
I'm Madeline Wilson, a fourth grade teacher at Elise Ford Allen Academy. I did my research on the impact of restorative justice practices in urban schools, specifically with referrals and school climate.
Hello, I'm Courtney Lee. I'm a counselor at Manuel High School. And I did a study that looked at the impact of school funding on student achievement, focusing primarily on Title I funding over a three-year period, to see how allocating funds in different ways would impact student needs.
My name is Jen Reader. I'm a teacher of the Visually Impaired and Orientation and Mobility Specialist at Peoria Public Schools. My home base is with Dr. C.T. Vivian. And I did my research with my partner, Ashley Ruiz. She's a kindergarten teacher at Dr. C.T. Vivian as well, on chronic absenteeism, the impact of attendance incentives on student perception of attending school. And I appreciate it being on the slide. It's been a long time since I've had to say that. Thanks.
Thank you so much for allowing us the opportunity to celebrate. And congratulations again to Cohort One.
Yes, you may, please.
I just wanted to say congratulations again. Thank you, Dr. Karat, and your staff for putting this together, introducing it to the board, and seeing it through. It's very important that we create pathways for our employees so that they can go on and do big things in Peoria Public Schools. When does Cohort Two start? It's already started.
It's one year in already. They have one more year.
Awesome.
They're about to start their internships.
That is wonderful. Cool. Thank you.
Okay, so does anybody else have any observation that you want to make?
Okay, I just want to personally say thank you. I love the fact that you said, we will grow our own. We grow our own teachers. We need to grow our own administrators, even here at the admin building. One thing is for sure, and it's been proven, that local people are loyal to their, you know, communities. And we need that. It brings stability to our neighborhoods, to our school district as a whole. When we all live here, we buy into it. We pay property taxes, which is huge. And I think we need to see that as an investment in our job. So many of us have the opportunity to invest in our companies. And when you do that, it adds a great value. It builds character, and it also builds some, you know, stability. And when we invest in something, we are more likely to be loyal to it. So thank you so much. I appreciate that. Student Showcase, Dr. Annette Coleman. Oh, yeah, and teachers and staff, if you guys are certainly free to go. We totally understand. We don't try to be here as long as not necessary, too, so. Thank you so much.
So good evening, President McConnell, Vice President Wilson, board members, Superintendent Karat. I am so excited to introduce to everyone a man that needs no introduction, Mr. Eric Thomas, the principal at Knoxville Center for Student Success. They had their mid-year graduation in December. And I know President McConnell and Board Member Rose were both there. It's such a, every mid-year, they allow the students to speak up and say, you know, tell us their story, their journey to Knoxville. And it's always moving and very emotional. I think this year, they even brought tears to Mr. Thomas's eyes. He might not want to admit that. But I will introduce him now, so he can introduce our student graduates.
Good evening. Dr. Karat, Board President McConnell, Board Members, District Administration, and a shout out to my executive director, Dr. Annette Coleman. Thank you for this opportunity to showcase and celebrate our recent mid-year graduates. We are proud to announce that we had 26 students complete their high school coursework at our December celebration. We anticipate at least 25 more students to graduate by the end of the year. Since the 2011, 2012 school year, we've had now over 900 students graduate, excuse me, complete their coursework and graduate from Peoria Public Schools. We appreciate the opportunity to be a true and effective alternative option for students needing a different pathway to high school graduation. Thank you, Dr. Karat, and Board of Education, for your caring and remarkable support of the KCSS. We have a dedicated and hardworking staff, and we are all wearing multiple hats to ensure that our students all meet expectations. We look forward to more graduates and more success in the weeks, months, and school years to come. I would like to present four of our graduates, Jenny and Jason Washington, our dynamic duo, and Andre Crawford and Christina Whitehead. Come on up.
Hi, my name is Andre Crawford. I am 18 years old, and I graduated from Knoxville Center for Student Success. Before I came to Knoxville, I would say, I was a lost kid. I didn't really know much. I was just ripping and running throughout these streets doing God knows what. And when I came to Knoxville, one thing they taught me was to stay focused and how to get my work done and just do it on time, you know? And like, it helped me with my knowledge. It helped me get smarter. And it helped me intellectually to know where I'm going after I graduated. Now, as I graduated, I know where I'm going, and I know where I need to go. So I thank Mr. Thomas for helping me and to make sure I graduate on time. And yeah, thank you.
Hello, my name is Jimmy Washington. I'm 18, and I graduated early from KCSS. I, when I was going to high school as a freshman, I had problems with mental instability and everything. But when I ended up going to KCSS, a smaller school, of course, Mr. Pete and Eric Thomas helped me out and helped me have more like a second family that I could get to know and talk to when I had problems and wanted to break away from what I was dealing with. And graduating from KCSS has put me onto a path where now I want to push my skills to as far as they can go. Thank you.
Hello, I am Jason Washington, twin brother of Jimmy Washington. And KCSS Launcher Restore was a basically alternative reality thing. I was someone in high school that could not focus. I'm always worried about missing work and all that. Yet KCSS changed it all for me. I started focusing on my work, believing in what I want to go into, meteorology, which they helped me apply for ICC. So I'm going into meteorology soon. It's very fun. Russell Thomas and Eric Thomas. I don't know if I'm pointing at the right one. I get confused. Were always there to help me. They, like my brother said, were basically an extension of our family. They felt like family members you could have at the school if your family members aren't there necessarily. And GSD 150, the entire board members, they've been here the entire time throughout my life, honestly. Especially from middle schools. I came from like Whittier, TruWin. I moved a lot of schools when I was younger and met a lot of people. Dupree was my freshman counselor while I was at Peoria High. So I met a lot of people that helped me understand who I wanted to be and what I wanted to do in the future. So thank you to you all.
Hello, my name is Christina Whitehead. I am 17 years old, and I graduated a year and a half early from KCSS. While I was there, they did a lot for me and helped me grow and mature a lot as a person. Before I came to KCSS, I had my freshman and half of my sophomore year at Richwoods High School. And unfortunately, I was subject to severe bullying. I was receiving death threats nearly on the daily my freshman year after second semester started due to people I went to middle school with being just terrible to me. I didn't think I would be alive at this age. I never, I didn't even think I'd make it to my 16th birthday. And now I'm a year and a half early done at Knoxville. I'm going to ICC 2025 September to go for my, I'm going to start with an associate's in mechanical engineering. And then I will probably go for my bachelor's degree. And I also want to understudy in criminal psychology. And I get to have that opportunity, thanks to the amazing staff at Knoxville. When I got there, I was very closed off. I was reserved. I was anxious. I was scared of people. And the staff and the students at Knoxville made it so that I was able to open up and become a completely different person and grow and change to be so much better than I ever thought I could have been. The staff there were like a security net. And they like kept pushing me to do better in supportive and helpful ways. So I need to say a massive thank you to all of the staff at KCSS for making sure that I kept going. So thank you so very much.
If you would have your staff who was in the building with you, can we recognize them? And the parents, too?
We have all KCSS staff, including our justice advocates and our parents, please, as well.
Mr. Thomas, thank you personally for your diligence, for your steadfastness to meet the students where they are and to help them find their best selves. To your team, to everybody who is there, who come, who show up every day and think outside the box. And I just love what the first speaker said, that he figured it out there. And that's what life is about. That is what our district is about, meeting kids where they are, meeting families where they are, and helping navigate their life and their circumstances. And I pray that the bullying does not happen to anybody, but even more so to someone. I'm so glad she was able to come and find a safety net, because that is serious when you think, as a teenager, that your life is in jeopardy. So thank you, thank you, thank you. I pray that life-changing stories come from this down the road, and you'll be an older guy. And these older people will come and see you in passing and just thank you for changing the trajectory of their life. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Moving right along, Dr. Karat's gonna share something with you guys. District presentation. Dr. Annette Coleman with Justice Advocate Update. Don't be bashful, y'all. This is your moment.
As I said earlier, the Knoxville graduates have tear-jerking stories. Their pathways are all different, and it's always very moving at that December graduation, because they get to speak. And just as impactful are our justice advocates. They've been in operation or organized in about six years. You just celebrated their six-year anniversary? Five-year anniversary. Just celebrated their five-year anniversary. So I'd like to introduce Ms. Marla Marbly, who is going to introduce our other justice advocates and give you a little, some stories about their work.
Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you for this moment. President McConnell, board members, Dr. Karat in her absence. I am Marla Marbly, lead justice advocate, of course, for Peoria Public Schools. And I'm honored to be here tonight. It seems like we could not have picked, you guys couldn't have picked a better meeting to bring us to, because it seems to be all about recognition and celebrations. I'm sure you guys want to hear about the Justice Advocate Department, which, as Dr. Coleman said, has been established now for five years.
Whoop, whoop, five years. Yeah, yeah.
But I really wanted to come in front of you all, too, acknowledge, celebrate, and congratulate my staff. Often in our meetings, when we're talking, it's been said that we have a thankless job. We don't get invited to many tables, many meetings, and stuff like that. But this staff, these people that are standing behind me, show up every single day. Each of them has about 30 students that they visit on a weekly basis. They go to court with these kids. They have been asked to sit in trials. They have to see footage that they probably won't be able to ever forget. They've been asked to testify in cases. They are tackling recidivism. They are tackling absence, chronic absenteeism. And so I would just like for everybody who is here to give my staff a round of applause for all of our hard work.
Could you just give us their names, too?
Yes, I will. Right here is Ms. Alicia Scott.
Right, Alicia.
Preston Coleman. Ms. Emily Walls. The Kevin Hill. And lastly, I also want to thank, um, my mentor, um, since this department was established, um, Principal Thomas has been instrumental in my growth, um, always literally lets me cry on his shoulder, always supportive, answers all questions, just has been phenomenal. He has, um, allowed us to be in his building, taking up his space. He's welcomed us into his staff meetings and as you just saw, um, he does include us as a part of his staff. So Principal Thomas, thank you. And then last but not least, Dr. Coleman.
That's right.
We had, I'm sure you all know, two previous directors and now we have the amazing Dr. Coleman who has just come in. She is so supportive, um, always offers guidance. And so, um, I just want to thank everybody that's here. Thank you, guys.
So, um, board, um, board members, do you want to say anything to them? Does anybody have anything this year? I just want to say personally, thank you. I happen to know most of you personally for a long time. I'm not going to age myself, but it's been more than ten years anyway. Um, so thank you for your service and your dedication because what you're doing is not easy and we realize that and it does take the young village. And your interventions with families and children to help guide them to a different path is amazing and it's life-changing. So hang in there with us. Um, just believe that the best is yet to come and it's coming. We're just gonna hang around and wait for it. So thank you.
Yes, thank you so much. Thank you all.
Okay, now we're up to the, um, point of presentation by audience. Just to note that you have five minutes to, um, share. Um, we caution that you will be mindful of the time and if you need any additional time, it will be granted at the, uh, consensus of the board and that the board secretary is keeping time and she alone will be monitoring that. So when you hear the, uh, bell ring, you have to stop. Um, first person is Niedra Tate.
Yes, you did, Niedra Tate.
Okay, thank you. Thanks for being here.
Yep, uh, my name is Niedra Tate. And I see you guys have a, what you consider a harmonious moment going on and I truly don't mean to rain on nobody's parade, but what I have to say, it's been a long time coming. So about eight years ago, I didn't understand why Dr. Lathan cried in front of me talking about her daughter. But through the years, come to find out, it was very clear why, because some of the board members went back and said I was talking about her daughter. Now I know what I said and I know who I said this to. And just for the record, what was said was, I talked about how I did not like the coach at the school at the time for the volleyball team because he used to call my daughter, who was here now, when she, she was in eighth grade, if, with her two pair of sunglasses. And I stated that he only cheated because Dr. Lathan's daughter was on the team, which was true. Now is that talking about her daughter or is that making a statement? But nevertheless, if that's what goes around, it's no wonder why kids haven't really been learning nothing in the district. If that's what grown people who's supposed to be educated are going around spreading about somebody, which is myself, who spent over fifteen years of my life from twenty-five to thirty-four, almost what, thirty-seven, just volunteering. And on top of it, yeah, I knew about the money that the district got because Martha Ross made it very clear that, oh wow, we got to listen to somebody who don't have the degree. So maybe that's what it was about, the fact that it was jealousy going on because I did have new innovative ideas that could have helped these kids in this district. But because I didn't have the degree like everybody was saying, then everybody who had the degree wanted the attention when it shouldn't have been about that. It should have been about who was willing to help. Cause I helped, I, I did this for years for free and I had five kids. But see, it's beyond that because let's talk about today, my daughter graduated from high school, Ms. Karat. When you came and tapped the lady on the, well, the young girl on the shoulder who was graduating as well, Mexican, and come see me in my office, I have a scholarship for you. Well, my daughter got the Lincoln Award. She was on the honor roll since kindergarten, which y'all displayed tonight and talked about, she didn't get recognition for it. Why? Oh, cause she was my daughter. And then when I called, when she only, when she ranked eighth in her class, which she should have definitely ranked number one, then I, then you guys bump her to seventh place and then the person who was valedictorian got expelled from school his freshman year. Oh, but his parents worked with you all too. But see, it's even deeper than that because she went to ICC and was denied the Peoria Promise when she called about it. I could only assume because she was my daughter. But see, what I'm here to let you know is, it didn't even matter because dummy went on and got her associates, her bachelors, her masters, and she's in a doctorate program right now and she will have it by the time she's twenty-seven. All my children graduated from high school and it wasn't due to District 150. But I sit back and think of how many more kids could have been successful had my own kind not been hating on me and trying to turn, turn backs and point fingers just because I could do the job that you didn't do. And I was damn good at it and I knew it. And what that was, was building a rapport with kids and love. So at the end of the day, I hope all y'all, especially you, Ms. Ross, while you smiled my years, my face for so many years and went back saying stuff that you said because, oh, just like y'all don't like me, there's plenty of them that didn't like y'all. But see, I wasn't the one to come back and say nothing because when you, you was like, oh, we want to know whose side you was on. What y'all was forgetting was I wasn't on nobody's side but the kids. So if it's all about sides, good luck with making this district so successful. And, and I guess y'all forgot about the call I made to the White House back in what, two thousand? Cause all that call gonna be made again because I want them to investigate the scholarships that go out, who they go to, if they even go to children who you know are gonna go, go to college. And then are there children who, who students have been cut out from what they was entitled to? Cause my daughter definitely was. You can't get the Lincoln Award and be in school and be on the honor roll since kindergarten and not get acknowledged for it. All this y'all talking about kids coming here all night and y'all want to praise them for stuff. My daughter did just, well, not just her, mind you, all my kids graduated though. And two of them, I couldn't even let you know, they were my kids because I didn't want them to be mistreated. But then we sit up here wanting our children to be successful, come to school all the time, do what the teachers say, just so the buddy system that I talked about for years still go on and the kids suffer the repercussions behind what the adults don't like about their parents. I hope that's something you straightened up because you talked a good game tonight, but I've seen a lot of white people. I didn't see the black kids from the schools that's been struggling too much.
Hey ma'am.
So good luck on making your district successful with the things that you do.
Thank you.
Cause your character make me question if you even wrote your dissertation.
All right. Thank you. Um, our next speaker is, um, Andel Jovanjowers and Gloria Jowers. And you guys are, are, um, speaking, um, together?
It's my daughter, but, um, she's shy. She's just gonna sit there and listen.
So you are, you, so you are Andel?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, all right. You may start now.
Okay, so I'm going to be brief. Um, basically, my name is Andel Jovanjowers. This is Gloria Jowers. Um, she's my youngest. Um, basically, I am a full-time father and I wanted to be more involved with the community, with the school board, um, with the city council, however I can be of service to you, um, I, I want to do that for you. I don't see, um, I don't see issues. I want to be an answer to, to issues. I don't want to come in and complain about nothing. I want to be a problem solver. I'm at Bradley right now, getting my masters in, uh, mental health counseling. I'll be finished by twenty-twenty-six. I'll be doing my, uh, my, um, internship at Carl Methodist on the sixth, seventh and eighth floors and at their satellite locations. And so I'm also starting a church, um, August. And, uh, I am a product of Bishop Joseph H. Johnson at Star of Hope Pool Gospel. What we'll be doing is we'll have another satellite church down at the Four Points of Sheridan, August third, uh, twenty-twenty-five at seven AM for Sunday school and eight, uh, AM for service. I will be the presiding, uh, overseer of that service. But we're going to be doing multiple things in the community and I just wanted to present myself. My daughter was the one who said I need to get up here and talk. I wasn't planning on it, but, um, Proverbs twenty-two and six says, train up a child in the way that he should go and when he is old, he will not depart from it. I, I'm a product of that. My father is a minister. Um, I went to Woodruff High School. He taught me well. Uh, Andrew James Jowers, uh, was a Woodruff graduate as well. I graduated in ninety-three. Um, she also wanted me to tell you guys that I'm a recording artist. I go by the name, I am Andel. Um, I was signed to Sony in two thousand seventeen and I still have tons of music out there and I'm still putting music out there with, uh, various choirs in the area. Um, I know you've probably heard of Justin Graham, who's a very talented musician. We're going to be doing some things with him as well. Um, and I just wanted to come up and commend you guys on the work that you've done. I'm glad I was here to see that, all the progress that you've made, all the accomplishments and achievements that you've made, I was in awe. And the, the girl almost made me cry, um, because of her story of being bullied and now she's on a different trajectory. I, I was almost in tears. And then I want to admonish you to keep going forward with what you're doing because we know that we have a specific purpose and a plan. God has a specific purpose, specific purpose and a plan for each and every one of us in this room. And so we're set here to impact generations. And so that's what I'm going to do. Um, that's what she is going to do before we go to bed and we close our eyes, we, we close it with the, the Lord's Prayer. And I tell her that she is the greatest woman of God, of her generation, every single time. And so she's heard that for eight years, that she's been alive, going on nine years. She's eight and a half, let me say that. So, but, uh, she is. And so I just want to say thank you for the opportunity to speak. Um, I'm sorry you had to, to, to have, you know, the negativity in the room, but you know, that you're going to have that. You're going to have that pushback because whenever there's light, you gotta, you gotta have darkness too. But we gotta be that light. And so there's some things that I would like to do with you guys if you, if you would have me and, and be of service to you. All right.
Thank you. Thank you. Um, yes. And Mr. Rumjowers, thank you. I, um, know your parents.
I know you.
And so thank you. And your daughter i- is a student in our district?
No, ma'am, she isn't. Um, I wanted her to be at a school where she was taught the Word.
Okay. We understand.
And so she's a pure Christian.
Okay, thank you. We understand. Um, so that closes out our audience, um, presentation. Next item is approval of minutes by the board. Um, oh, Dr. Karat, do you have any, uh, response?
I just actually wanted to get some Jowers, uh, information.
Oh, okay, yeah. There it is. It's on there. Um, so does anybody have any, uh, response to the audience from the board? All right, thank you. Um, may we have a motion to approve minutes from November eleventh and the twenty-fourth of, um, twenty-twenty-four? Adam Secretary for the role.
Mrs. Costick.
Hi.
Mrs. Murray.
Hi.
Mrs. Rose.
Hi.
Mrs. Ross.
Hi.
Dr. Wilson.
Aye.
President McConnell.
Aye.
We have six ayes. Motion carries.
Thank you so much. Information item, superintendent update, financial update after that, and, uh, proposed expenditures over twenty-five hundred in that order. Thank you.
Thank you, President McConnell. Again, Happy New Year to everyone. Um, we started on January sixth. Um, PPS is off to a great start, um, and we're focused on having a strong second semester. On January sixth, we held an E Institute Day. Um, so teachers were able to stay home because I'm sure you remember we had all this projected five to twelve inches of snow, which never showed up. But, um, I, I was just really excited about the principals and their team and how they stepped up and created such amazing training virtually for their staff. Um, it was engaging. I was able to jump from one to another and I know my team did as well. And Ms. Brooks kept saying, Dr. Karat, that wasn't a bad idea because she said, I was able to go to four or five. If I had to drive to the buildings, I probably would have only been able to do one or two. So I know Dr. Comfort Aquaji, um, Dr. Corey Molson, um, and I know for sure, um, uh, Ms., uh, Dr. Coleman, also you went to Treewind, you were all over the place. And so, yes, um, we were really, really pleased. Some of them had large, large groups, small groups, they had breakout rooms. So Ms. Seiple, we've come a long way from March twenty-twenty when seventy-five percent of us couldn't use Teams and didn't know what to do virtually and now they're so proficient at it. And, and then just for a quick, just a very quick update regarding Quest, uh, the Quest charter closure and repurposing. It's progressing very, very well. Um, Dr. Ike, Ms. Sample, Ms. Seiple, Brandon Bell, Deb, a number of us, uh, meet regularly with, um, board member from Quest, Ross, their attorney, and, um, two staff that Dr. Ike mentioned that we, we hired from Quest to help with the transition. We, we meet very regularly, um, really to get the building ready and to fulfill all of the, um, closing of a charter school requirements. And I'll tell you, it's a long, long, long list. We looked at it again, we're making progress, but I'm proud to just let the board know things are moving along very nicely with that. And sooner rather than later, maybe February, maybe March, you'll get an update. And then I would like to be able to also submit an update to Illinois State Board of Education, the board members and the state superintendent, um, showing the progress that we've made and the, the transfer. We're close to transferring everything over to PPS. There's still some things, um, we have to, we have to do. And then a big congratulations to Dr. Coleman for being, uh, selected by Carver Center, Carver Community Centers, Winter Wonderland, A Starry Night. Um, she received the Irma Davis Education Award. Many of us knew Ms. Davis, were dating ourselves probably.
Yes, we are.
Very, very nice lady and, uh, just made such an impact in our community and fought for kids and just improving, um, the life and, and community for everyone. So Dr. Coleman, that was a great honor. Congratulations. And as we, you've heard, Dr. Coleman is the Executive Director of High Schools and also the Director of Community-Based SCL. And then, um, our president mentioned it earlier, just a big thank you to all of our staff members who, um, supported the foundation by attending the three sixty-five breakfast. Um, it really does go a long way. Um, I, I get to read Dr. Coleman's weekly updates and Lynn Fur's weekly update. We have a number of parents, families that are really having a tough time with rent and utility and, um, even food and they, 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 they help a lot with that. We get the emails, we, you know, and, and so we, we send all of those requests over to the foundation and they helped, they help as, as much as they can and, um, sometimes the funds are depleted. So this will be an opportunity, um, to replenish and then help families again. So that's my update. Board and President McConnell.
Thank you. Um, next item, financial, um, update. Mr. Willis.
Um, year-to-date expenditures, uh, through January tenth. Year-to-date revenue, uh, through January tenth totaled one hundred twenty-nine point six million. That's about fifty-two percent of the budget. Um, three-year trends, we average about forty-eight percent, uh, of budget, so we're a little hit in terms of revenue. On the spending side, um, through January tenth, we're at one hundred thirty-two point one million. That's about fifty-one percent of budget. Uh, we typically are at about forty-four percent of budget through January. Um, the big difference, uh, and why we're trending a little bit higher is we had, uh, debt service payments on our bonds that normally are booked in February. This year, it all happened a little bit earlier, so our January spend percentage, uh, is running higher as a result, but it'll all even out by the time February gets here. Uh, that's, uh, concludes my report. I'd be happy to answer any questions anybody may have.
Anybody have any questions? Okay. Um, uh, proposed expenditures over twenty-five hundred. Have any report of requests under the Freedom of Information Act?
Thank you, President McConnell. Since our board meeting on December ninth, we received seven new requests from Freedom of Information request, and there were four pending requests noted on December ninth. Of those, zero requests remain open and there are four, a request currently open.
Action items. Dr. Wilson.
Yes, thank you.
Yes, thank you, President McConnell. The consent agenda consists of the following items. Item number one, gifts to school district. Item number two, payment of bills. Item number three, payment for travel. Item and item number four, human resource report. And that is the entirety of the consent agenda.
Okay, do we have any um, does anybody want to unpull them? Okay, motion to approve the items on the uh consent a agenda.
Second.
Thank you. Madam Secretary for roll call.
Mrs. Costick. Mrs. Murray.
Hi.
Mrs. Rose.
Hi.
Mrs. Ross. Dr. Wilson.
Aye.
President McConnell. We have six ayes. Motion carries.
Okay, deliberation.
Yes, deliberation agenda policy number seven colon sixty, students tuition waiver slash non-resident students. Proposed action that the Peoria Board of Education approve a proposed revision to policy number seven colon sixty.
Someone, second?
I just have a question. No, go ahead. Yeah, go ahead, Ms. Ross.
Okay. I I read the uh the dialogue. And what I'd like to know is how many students are we talking about?
I want to make sure that our students, you know, have space and are well well-rounded and well-able to get the, you know, sp- spaces they need. But how many students are we talking about? Is that any any student coming going forward or is there a number of students?
Yeah, great question. Um, actually, and we have been, we have been we have been inviting or accepting tuitioned students uh since I've been here for ten years, starting with the full and then when we adjusted it to five. And I would say it's less than five. Um, about, did you say four? We currently have four now with the five, and that's with the five, with the five thousand. Um, so it's it's.
So it would depend basically primarily on who who wanted to bring their kids, right? Because I know a number of uh staff don't live in the district.
Correct.
So we, I mean, is there a cap or are we just talking about the ones we currently have?
Yeah, based on the pa- the track record and based on what we've seen and trends, we don't anticipate an influx. And I don't anticipate no more than ten, to be honest with you, if that many. But um and Dr. Ike, you can you can add to that as well. The um legislators have pigged, targeted this, this um initiative as as an opportunity to assist with not only recruitment but retention of staff as well. And so that's that's the purpose of that. You know, add anything to that?
Just you or I? Just in in June of uh, June twenty-nine of twenty twenty-three, the state legislature kind of uh granted districts the waiver to give up to a hundred percent. So on the five thousand, I'd uh up to a hundred percent waiver. Encourage uh more uh teachers to be able to bring their students in. Of course, there's has to be room and um transportation is on them, not the rules.
Okay, I just have some reservations with this. Um, I do understand that that might aid in it and may not. Because most teachers, if they don't live in the district, they don't live in the district for a reason. And um I respect that, but I do struggle with those of us who do live in the district and pay property taxes that I I am personally, I've paid, I made a contribution to my kids' public school education because I live in the district and I pay property taxes. Um, to that point, if it's five thousand, they're basically spending four hundred and sixteen dollars a month on educating their child for all the things that the district offers. And we do offer a lot, extracurricular activities, a laundry list of things that some districts do not have, rural versus urban. That's um one. I'm just not for waiving completely, maybe cut it in half, twenty-five hundred dollars, which would equate to about two hundred and eight dollars a month for their student to um be here. And I think that it's prudent for us to have, as we educate our kids, as I chose Peoria Public Schools because I live in the district and I'm and I'm vested here, that anybody that's not a resident of Peoria County should have some kind of investment. Um, I do appreciate teachers who choose to work here and who want to bring their kids. But if they choose not to live in our district, they're they're not making a contribution. They're taking their their property taxes to other counties. Not, I mean, some of them live in Peoria County, some live in Fulton, some live in Pontiac, some live in other districts, which their property taxes support that local district. Um, I think it's a disservice to our to our population as a whole that the parent is not vested in the school district and that we give them a free education at our expense, at my expense. Um, so I cannot, you know, support that. Of course, it is um it is up to the board and to have four students here making a contribution, I think that's admirable. And I think as a parent, um, most of us invest where we live. Most of us invest in where we live. And teachers who don't live in Peoria County, who do not live in Peoria Public Schools, whose kids go to the academy or Brentfield and neighboring districts, invest in their district, not only in their property taxes, but they go to the games, they participate in the fundraisers, they do a lot to invest in that local unit. And I think that's prudent. If we are offering a five-star education with some urban issues, then I think we need vested partners um in that. And nothing's free. Even public education is not free for those of us who live in the district and pay. But even more so, um, as a parent, I invested a lot, lot of money and a lot of time. Lot of money donating meals and supporting fundraisers and just a lot. And so I'd like to see that every student has that vested interest. Every parent needs to have that same vested interest in our district because nothing is free. Just it just doesn't happen like that. And if that teacher is here, they're getting paid to be here. So so we are compensating them from our from our tax base. And I think it's only fair. Thank you. Somebody else have a statement?
I think the reason I was so excited about this policy that the state legislator kind of put through is because um I can think of quite a few teachers who teach in our district who I know don't live in our district, who um are rock star teachers and who I see often um struggle with the fact that their kids are on a different schedule. They have different days off. And I think that this could be a great motivator to bring their kids to our district. And then maybe they'll love it so much, they will move into our district and they will pay our property taxes. But even if they never moved, if they brought their students and they were on the same schedule, we're way more likely to retain them. And I also think that they're gonna invest in the PTOs. They're gonna invest in the community. They're gonna come to things because they're teachers and they see the benefit to that. Um, and so I would be sad. I think this is a, I I personally really support this legislator and the opportunity to provide this to the teachers in our district.
Anybody else? Sure.
What Christina Rose said.
Okay, anybody else?
I agree with Christina.
Okay.
I agree. There are there are two sides to everything. Um, uh, I understand, I understand um President McConnell, what you're saying. I also understand what Christina's Christina's saying, Ms. Rose is saying also. I I think that as you said, as you said, Ms. McConnell, that we should be, we should meet like halfway with that. If a if a teacher is interested, then they would have been interested before. Does that make sense? Okay, so if they wanted to bring their children to this district, they would have done so prior to where we are now with the legislature, legislature saying that we can do this. That's kind of my my misgivings on it, but I do I do think that, I mean, uh, you never know if it wo- it'll work until you try it. But I do think that there has to be some type of an investment and we should, we can do it. I mean, it's, I don't have a problem with us doing it. But I think that we need to um like have some kind of financial responsibility, some buy-in, you know, not just getting the opportunity to just bring your kids to work, to school outside.
I just want to say that, you know, I, for years, years, we've been trying to balance this um this this inequity as far as teachers and others, administrators and all living outside of the district. And um and I'm not saying that they don't invest in the district. They in they are here and they get paid to do a job here, but for years, we've been trying to figure how we could uh, you know, balance this out. And I saw, I I just think that, you know, I agree, if we if we want to cut it in half or whatever, we don't have to change it just because we have new legislation. But it's um, it's, to me, people have to have some investment, you know, in in their um, you know, in in their in their education of their children. So.
Yeah, you want to say something?
So I think what I'm hearing, Madam President, is if it can be tabled and we can adjust it and bring it back on the January twenty-seventh board meeting.
Is that an agreement?
We can just, we can just, we can, we can vote on this now. And then if we need to we need to modify it, then we can do that in a separate action.
Okay. So it's all hearts and minds clears? Okay, motion, so the motion has been made. Question on the floor. Um, all in favor voting by the sign, or Madam Secretary, can you call the roll, please? I was at the church for a minute.
Mrs. Costick. Mrs. Murray.
Hi.
Mrs. Rose.
Aye.
Mrs. Ross.
No.
Dr. Wilson.
Aye.
President McConnell.
No.
We have two names.
Can we, can we hold that for just a minute? Were we voting on?
We were voting to a approve because it was already second. So the motion on the floor. No, we were gonna offer it as a as a separate act in the next meeting. So we're just voting on this complete waiver now. Okay. So do you want it?
Let's do the whole call again.
Okay.
Clarify it.
So, okay, so the uh motion on the floor is that we are voting to support this complete waiver.
As is.
As it stands in this policy recommendation. So Madam Secretary, would you call the uh roll again, please?
Mrs. Costick.
No.
Mrs. Murray.
Hi.
Mrs. Rose.
Aye.
Mrs. Ross.
No.
Dr. Wilson.
Aye.
President McConnell.
No.
We have three ayes, three names.
So it's a tie. Um, at this point, we can reconsider. We can offer a um substitute motion if we want to modify it. The amount.
Our legal services said something.
We can make a motion to amend the language now if you want to do that.
Okay.
Or you can.
Okay. Right, well then I I think that we should just settle it tonight. So if I could entertain a motion for the tuition to be cut in half, so it's currently five thousand dollars, we're seeing twenty-five hundred, which works out to be two hundred and eight dollars a month and thirty-three cent. That motion is now being offered as an amendment to that.
So moved.
Second. Okay. Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll, please.
Mrs. Costick.
Hi.
Mrs. Murray.
No.
Mrs. Rose.
No.
Mrs. Ross.
Aye.
Dr. Wilson.
A little confused. So if if it's a tie again, does that essentially uh stop this policy from being?
Correct, yes. It does. And then we, and then you can bring it back up again when we have seven. Anytime.
No.
President McConnell. Aye. So we'll just bring it back up at the next one. Twenty, when we have seven, seven um members present. Thank you so much for that um deliberation. You have another item, resolution to effect permanent transfer?
Uh, yes, item number six, resolution to effect a permanent transfer from working cash fund to the transportation fund.
Oh, my.
Any questions uh about that, anyone?
Need a motion?
Well, y- you're making the motion.
I, well, I just read it. Um, oh, yes, I made the motion.
Second, and then questions. One question? Okay, um, Mr. Willis. You know, I've been ru- following this transportation fund for a while. So what's our justification for moving um money out of working cash to transportation? What's the justification for that?
We have uh some major vehicle needs in transportation. There literally is no other way to fund three million dollars worth of vehicle needs without moving uh available monies from working cash to the transportation fund in order to get that done. The transportation fund right now uh is supporting uh the electric, electric bus infrastructure. In addition, uh, the district has some co-pay on the electric buses. So uh when we revise the budget, which we're in the process of doing, the transportation fund is going to be more upside down than it than it was when we presented the budget in September. The need is significant enough that we felt like uh this uh available option to us was the best course of action.
What does that leave in the in the working cash fund? Because we were supposed to keep it at a certain level.
And the working cash fund is healthy. So the working cash fund is is right now at about twenty-seven and a half million. So that would take it to twenty-four and a half million um and still give us uh plenty of resources should we need that for operational purposes. A side note, uh, part of working cash availability has to do with bonds uh that we pay off. In the time I've been here, we've paid about twenty-one million dollars of those working cash bonds off. This time next year, all bonds related to the working cash fund will be paid off a hundred percent. So we will have one hundred percent access to the twenty-four and a half million dollars that remains in the working cash fund. So we're we're in a good place, a good enough place that we could carve off a small piece of the working cash in order to meet this severe need and still have plenty of emergency resources should that be needed.
Yeah, I just hate to see us too because we we spent so much time putting putting stuff in in there that would not allow us to. If we borrowed from it, we had to pay it back, you know, because we, it was supposed to be capped at thirty-eight million and and not take anything out of it. But, I mean, I understand that. But we get um reimbursement from the transportation funds, right? But not enough, you're saying?
Th- that's correct. We um, we're working uh with legislators and having conversations with legislators all the time about correcting the funding formula for transportation, which inherently causes the transportation fund to run upside down. You spend, you know, a dollar and you're only getting about forty cents of that back. And really, uh, the the, all districts basically have to kick in uh to the transportation fund in order to kind of keep it afloat. We're fortunate to have resources to be able to do it and still have, you know, still have some emergency money.
There was one point that we didn't have any money in ru- working cash. Somebody took it before you came and and paid bills off and. Somebody took it before you came and, and paid bills off and, and we were, we were really upside down on everything. And that's when we set it up where could not touch it. If you did borrow it from it, you had to put it back.
Yeah.
Um, I have a couple of reservations. Can we see the um details of the future purchase and the timeline? Or did we already see that yet?
So the purchases.
What you plan on buying, just some detail about it?
Nine buses in order to be able to fulfill the needs for next year.
So there are nine buses and you're getting electric buses?
Ten full-size buses.
Some, like, uh, some special ed.
Broke that with me, but it was, it, there were, it, it was about twenty vehicles total. There were ten, I believe, full-size buses. Uh, there were four or five of the shorter uh buses that were handicapped, capped accessible. Uh, we have small bus slash vans um uh that we use to uh transport uh students in sports and that kind of thing. There was like five or six of those. Uh, so it, when you tally it all up, it was almost twenty vehicles, if I recall.
Well, um, if you will, can we table this and then you send us, bring us all that information so that we can tangibly see that? So it can make sense to us, um, what that anticipated cost is. When you say electric um buses, do we have the charging ports for that? All that goes into transitioning from fuel to electric, you got to have an infrastructure to be able to utilize those.
That's being built right now.
Yeah, this doesn't have anything to do with that one, that's a separate, um.
Well, no, if we can just, as a board, if we can just see everything you are saying, just in writing, if you could send that to us and then we can table this and we can, we can make a more informed vote than just on an assumption. I would appreciate that.
Oh, no problem.
Yes.
Is it, there a motion then to table it?
Yes. Yeah, I was, I was, I was getting to that.
Okay, sorry.
Yeah, so, um, yeah, so the board, does the board members have any other comments on that?
Well, quickly, uh, uh, what, three months ago, so a few months ago, someone came, there was a group of people that came and talked about how they could uh enhance the, um, who was that?
Vergey.
Oh, Vergey, yeah.
Yeah, that, how they could raise like twenty or thirty million dollars uh to um support the, support the Transportation Department. You remember that, when he brought them in? So what happened to that?
Well, we're, that, that's what, that group is the group that's building the infrastructure for the electric buses. Uh, that, which is uh like a five-million-dollar project.
Okay, so I, I, is there a motion to table? Motion to um table, yes, I will entertain a, a motion to um table. Does anybody else have any other questions or either statements? Board members? Okay, motion, oh, Dr. Karat, you want to make an observation?
Just, just quickly, um, I'm just concerned, Mr. Willis, about the timeline. Um, and Dr. Ike, you meet with Josh on a weekly basis. Um, there is really an urgent need to replace these buses. And we know of the supply chain um challenges. Um, so if we, and we're going to need, we're going to need these vehicles for Ju- August, right? So just FYI, for, as the board is making its decision. Because the ask is three min, three million from the working cash to purchase. Um, and we're working with Senator Kayla and Jahan as well because, as Mr. Willis said, the, you know, the paration is a big problem. We're getting, we're getting maybe fifty, fifty, fifty percent um of our total expenses in that line item. So transportation is always, always in the red.
Yeah, so, but just FYI. For the sake of time, us voting on this in two weeks, I don't think it's going to make that big of a difference. So if you can get that information to us so that we can have all the information, so that we can understand that. And we do understand there is a timeline. But, but then equally, if we're making this, you know, decision, twenty-four million is not a lot of money for a, a district. It just isn't.
So I, I do just.
Okay, go ahead, yes, question.
Um, so that it'll be tabled until the next meeting once, you know, make it get it, so we'll be.
He's going to send us all the information, um, all of the, and I, and I, and I am aware of the legislation for that funding, but we just need to see the um complete picture.
Sure, no.
So that if we don't do three million, if we do whatever, if we don't get ten buses, we get eight. We just need to make it make sense first.
Sure.
Okay, thank you. All right, motion to.
Add to that report, the number of buses we've already bought in the last year, year and a half, that was your question. I didn't know. Okay, sorry, so.
Okay, so.
I'm going to make the motion.
Okay, thank you.
Table.
Okay, Madam Secretary for the roll. Motion to table until our next meeting is the motion that we're voting on.
Mrs. Kostic?
Aye.
Mrs. Murray?
Aye.
Mrs. Rose?
Aye.
Mrs. Ross?
Aye.
Dr. Wilson?
Aye.
President McConnell?
Aye.
We have six ayes, motion carries.
Discipline Committee number seven and eight.
Okay, you want to, yeah, I'll, I'll, yeah. Expulsion with the expulsions held in abeyance. The proposed action is that the Board of Education approve expulsions with the expulsions held in abeyance. Listed on the report dated January thirteenth, twenty-twenty-five, be approved as presented.
Sumo, second.
Madam Secretary?
Yeah, second.
All right, Madam Secretary, roll.
Mrs. Kostic?
Aye.
Mrs. Murray?
Aye.
Mrs. Rose?
Aye.
Mrs. Ross?
Aye.
Dr. Wilson?
Aye.
President McConnell?
Aye.
We have six ayes, motion carries.
Thank you, number eight, uh, proposed action is that the Board of Education approve expulsions listed on the report dated January thirteenth, twenty-twenty-five, be approved as presented.
Second. Madam Secretary for the roll.
Mrs. Kostic? Mrs. Murray?
Aye.
Mrs. Rose?
Aye.
Mrs. Ross?
Aye.
Dr. Wilson?
Aye.
President McConnell?
Aye.
We have six ayes, motion carries.
All right, presentation and suggestions by any board members? Um, I just want to make one um observation. We want to be in prayer for our superintendent and the loss of her sister. Um, she needs to leave expeditiously when this meeting's over, she has a very early flight. So if we all will give, grant her that so that she can leave any other, if any, if anybody needs anything from her, let's just give her a break for the next, for the rest of this week so that she can deal with her family in this um very tender time. And you do have our prayers and our, you know, support. Um, and we're just sorry to um learn of your loss. Um, reports from board, um, committee members?
The Behavioral Intervention Committee will meet again on Wednesday, January twenty-ninth at four PM virtually.
Thank you.
Building and grounds will meet, excuse me, on uh January the twenty-first at ten, ten o'clock.
Anybody else? Policy Committee?
Uh, the Policy Committee will get a date and then inform the public once we uh get that date together.
All right, thank you. Um, all hearts and minds clear, motion to adjourn, please.